This is the April 12, 2022 meeting in the Woodstock community unit school's 1500 order of education. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Here.
Dr. Ferris?
Present.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Hedley?
Here.
Mr. Homo?
Present.
Mr. Misselli?
Here.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Here.
Okay, first item of our business tonight is our consent agenda. Consent agenda is before you, please take a moment to review it. There's also a personnel agenda. And if any member would like to have added pull from the consent agenda, please. From y'all. There are no items to be pulled from the consent agenda and obtain a motion which appears, suggests a motion appears on page one of our matrix.
Move to waive the reading up and approve the consent agenda as printed in the board agenda, including the personnel addenda updated April 12, 2022.
A motion by Mr. Peruzzi, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hedley, roll call, please.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Homo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, then the next item of our agenda is our communications. Communications are a time for commuting members of district employees to express a point of view not to debate an issue. Here's a sign up sheet for the public to identify name, address, phone number, name of the organization represented at any, and a description of the topic to be addressed. Comments are generally limited to three minutes and are otherwise governed by board policy two, colon, two thirty. We'll start with public comments, and as usual, we will start with the public comments. Those people who have signed up to speak can address the board. So we'll start with those, and the first on our list is John McHale.
Thank you very much, board. My name is John McHale. Live at 476 Jerry Street in Woodstock. I'm actually here for my son, who's in hilarious game of Senior Assassin and is scared to leave the house or he's on a hunch somewhere. I don't know what's going on, but all of a sudden, he's an agent or something, so. Hi, my name is Liam McHale. I'm a senior at Woodstock High School, and I'll be attending Trinity International University in the fall on an academic and athletic scholarship. I'm writing this to the, I'm writing this to the, to the board on the topic of combining athletic programs between both schools. I'm in favor of combining the two programs because of the experiences that I've had the past five years in the district. Part of me did not want to share this to the board because I'm going to be leaving in a few weeks, but comments on social media, at school, and by people talking to you, sorry, talking to you, the board, have made me want to express my concern on the matter. Both schools athletic programs need to be combined. This will force us to join the FEC or another large district, giving Woodstock the best chance to improve our teams' cultures and results. The KRC, oh, she was right, just lost it, I'm sorry about that. The KRC is one of, if not the weakest conferences in the state. Every year, certain sports teams go, do very well in conference play and then get steamrolled in the early rounds by teams in superior conferences. Playing better competition weekly will not only create a stronger team, but also it require, it will require everyone to come together and work year round to develop and maintain a winning culture. This will also help the individual be the best athlete he or she can be. Having more players on a team program will lead to better competition in practice to earn the right to be a starting varsity athlete instead of just being given the role due to lack of players. How will this be done by my son or daughter, parents may ask? Well, it's simple. They will be showing up every day in offseason, workouts, practice, film sessions, and doing things outside of that as well on their own. It's very simple concept of outworking your competition, whether that be in order to start, sorry, sorry, I get a little nervous in public speaking, I apologize. Whether that be in order to start for your own team or against another team. I'm sorry, I just shake it a little bit here, geez.
Keep running.
Sorry.
We're pretty friendly.
I know, I just, I don't know what it is, I just. A perfect example of this mentality and drive is my sister, Woodstock High School alum, who worked hard, tried out against over a hundred others over a six-week period. She not only walked on the rowing team at the University of Alabama, she is currently one of the top, in one of the top three votes of the 15th nationally ranked Crimson Tide. The culture in some areas needs to be corrected. I got tired of hearing every year at the Fall Athletic Meeting not to even think about, I gotta go sit down, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, John. John.
We can read it up here, I'd like to have it read the rest of the way through.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The trick to public speaking is make sure your flies are done. And everything else will be, you know, shake it off. All right, we're over here. All right, so he was talking about his sister. The culture in some areas needs to be corrected. I got tired of hearing every year at the Fall Athletic Meeting not to even think about the D1 level, being shown all the graphics and measurements of what it takes to play at that level, hearing we're just Woodstock folks. Well, I'm happy to say my sister didn't meet any of those measurements, so it is possible. Pushback in this proposal really shows where some people are, are at in this town, the culture of mediocrity. If you have a fear of playing in a bigger conference, that really just proves it because you are fine in playing in inferior opponents and keeping a status quo of discompeting at local level. Our districts have the student athletes to compete and win regularly at the state level. Future Woodstock can be so great if we just change the way we've been doing things, sets us flat. I hope you take this from a four-year starting athlete who earned everything I got in my time here. Thank you all and God bless. And then that's the end. Very, very. Thank you for coming and thank you for, to Liam, for sending us thoughts. Our next speaker is Cameron Monti.
Good evening. I thank you for the opportunity to present before the board. My name is Cameron Monti. I have two boys who are students at Creekside Middle School and Woodstock High School and compete in baseball, football, and track and field. I submit to the board that the primary purpose of high school and secondary education is to educate our students and to prepare them for the next chapter of their adult lives, whether it be to continue their education pursuits at college or university, enroll at a trade school, find a job or begin their occupation or career, or maybe even start a business as a motivated entrepreneur. To begin, I start off by saying that I strongly support the proposal to combine Woodstock High School and Woodstock North High School into one united Woodstock sports program. Doing so will ultimately enhance the level of competition and skill set of our united Woodstock athletes and sports teams, and in turn, will ultimately quick raise the bar of athletes to be able to reasonably compete against more competitive athletes in high school sports programs in the state of Illinois. Competition has been proven to foster growth, development, and improvement, whether it be in technological advancements, medical achievements, or business growth. Similarly, competition begets the improvement of athletic skills and talent level and serves to promote athletic and personal growth, progress, and development. On the flip side, the lack of competition sets the stage for complacency and mediocrity. I present to you from a somewhat unique perspective. According to recent NCAA statistics, less than 2% of all high school varsity athletes have the opportunity to compete at a Division One college sports level. I had the honor and the privilege to be a former D1 athlete, receiving a full scholarship to compete with the men's track and field and cross country teams at the University of Illinois Chicago from 1993 to 97. Thus, as a former, former D1 college athlete, I can personally attest to the fact that in order to develop our high school athlete skills to a higher level, to have a reasonable chance to compete at a higher collegiate level, it is critical that our high school athletes have the opportunity to train and compete at a higher level of sports and against better athletes and more competitive high school athletic programs. The only way we can reasonably do this is to combine our Woodstock High School programs and field more competitive and talented sports teams. Combining the two high school athletic programs will arguably enable Woodstock to field a better team, talented teams, allow the united teams to avail itself to more athletic resources and facilities, and select the best coaches among two schools to properly coach and train our athletes. As a quick sidebar, it is as important, if not more important, that we have coaches who have the knowledge, experience, desire, and ability to train, instruct, and develop our high school athletes. Tell me if my three minutes are up. An argument in opposition to unifying the two high school programs is that some student athletes may not have the opportunity to make the roster of a sports team. I can understand and empathize with the fact that more competition may very well mean there will be cuts and some students who won't make the varsity team. Unfortunately, however, high school is not recreational park district sports. This is a competitive high school varsity sports that we're talking about without participational awards. At, at some point in time, I believe the time is now, that our students need to learn and understand that in real life, not everyone wins and gets what they want. Not everyone gets into the college of their dreams or gets the prized job offer. In life, rejection and failure does happen, and it happens to all of us, and for good reason. Competition, rejection, and failure to help us learn, adapt, work harder, and seek to attain lofty goals and dreams. The point has been made that in the past, many of our sports teams struggle to field enough athletes to field a competitive team and in some cases, a team, a field a team at all. Combining forces of our two high schools, school sports programs should resolve this problem. I submit that there are likely hundreds of thousands of dollars of athletic scholarships that are lost by Woodstock High School athletes because most of our athletes are just too ill-prepared to reasonably attempt to compete against other high school athletes from much larger and more competitive high school athletic programs. There is a clear and distinct difference in skill and talent level when you compare Woodstock versus, say, Naperville Central or Wheaton-Warrenville South High School. Now, I do believe that I could have competed at, oh, sorry. Now, do I believe I could have competed at D1 level without having the training, experience, and competition against very talented runners from Wheaton, Naperville, Hoffman, Glenell, and West Chicago, Hinsdale, et cetera? Absolutely not. Higher level competition fosters the need for better training and better coaches plus competition to become and stay competitive. Why do you think that most D1 university coaches and staff primarily focus their recruitment and scouting efforts to athletes from high schools with large, well-established athletic programs? Because they know historically that high-level athletes are developed from those larger schools. Those high schools have a larger pool of athletes to choose from and can be more selective as who makes the cut for the varsity teams. Simply put, we need to develop our Woodstock High School athletes to higher level and put, put an end to fostering athletic mediocrity that has plagued Woodstock for decades. Many of my fellow friends, high school athletes who have the fortune to, to compete with or against me in the DuPage Valley Conference earned athletic scholarships and competed at D1 athletic programs. Just in my small circles, I had friends that competed at soccer at Stanford, soccer at University of Pennsylvania, track at Purdue, Auburn, Missouri, UIC, Eastern Illinois, and that was in my small network of friends from my high school. How many athletes from Woodstock compete at D1 levels? Not many at all, and there is good reason. Am I over time or am I not? Okay. Let me, let me go to the, toward the end. In closing, part of the high school education experience undeniably involves competing in athletics, athletic sports for many, and as a result, the plethora of invaluable life lessons and benefits are Woodstock athletes derived from this competition. If managed properly, competitive high school athletics, and I emphasize the word competitive again, can help our student athletes navigate through the thrill of victory and the agony of defeat. And I'm not necessarily speaking of the victory or defeat of, in our high schools, in our high schoolers' respective high school sport. Rather, I am actually referring to our mission and purpose as parents, teachers, educators, administrators, and coaches to lay the proper foundation for our high school students to reasonably navigate for themselves life's victories and life's defeats. I believe Woodstock can do a much better job to prepare our student athletes for life's obstacles by providing them with higher-level coaching, better athletic resources, improved training, and heightened competition. This is best achieved by combining the athletes, coaches, and resources of Woodstock High School, Woodstock North High School programs into one united team. I thank the board for the time, attention, and the support to present my position.
Thank you for coming. Next is Lexie Hedges.
Hello. Hello, my name is Levi Hedges. I play soccer and I used to play baseball. I want to tell you that in the athletes, thinking, the people that are thinking of combining sports, I don't think it's a good idea because that, like, when it, it's fun to compete against your friends, but I think it's just the football people that need to combine because look at our dance team, they made it to state, and they're doing all right too. But I think it's fun just for the high school to combine instead of just all the sports combining because I like to compete against my friends and I like to compete against, like, other people, and I'm a competitive person, so I like to win a lot, but I think if we continue doing this, then we can probably win more, and if we combine, I don't think that would work at all.
Thank you for coming. Sorry I mispronounced your name, I thought it was Lexie, it's lovely, but thank you for coming and expressing your thoughts. Todd Gannon.
Hi, my name is Todd Gannon. I've spoken in front of you guys before, and I've also sent out a couple emails that hopefully you got and read. I'm the senior executive vice president for Woodstock Little League. I'm the vice president of football operations for Woodstock Thunder and Cheer. I'm here tonight, I'll be quick, I promise. I'm here to hopefully persuade you to combine the high school programs. We are at a point now where it's make or break. With this issue has brought, been brought up several times, and only in the years that I've been paying attention, it's been brought up three separate different times. And it's just gonna, we cannot keep kicking the can down the road. It's gonna happen eventually. I know it's heartbreaking for some of the juniors and seniors, those families that are currently in the high schools. It's a very tough situation for them, and I understand that. And I do understand all the trials and tribulations that that, those North families have went through. It was very tough for them to become, create their own identity as a school after having, being broken off from a school that's been around for a hundred years. It was very tough for them, and we appreciate every single second that they spend raising money, building the programs, getting kids to come out, spending their time. And I, believe me, I'm with it. I'm on the North side too, so my kids will go to North if we do not combine. But I just wanted to reiterate that we cannot base this decision on feelings. There is a whole lot of feelings going around right now. Everybody's got a feeling. Check out Facebook, you'll see them. And I'm, I'm guilty of it too. I'm just as guilty as the other side. So I just want to reiterate, that's why you guys are here. That's why you guys are in charge. The smartest people in the room right now, and we need you to make the right decision moving forward, helping out our future athletes in Woodstock. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there another sign up sheet in the back? No, nobody else signed in? Okay. So that's everybody who signed up. Does anybody else wish to address the board at this time? Any member of the public wish to address the board at this time?
Hi, I'm Kaylee Garrett. I am.
Can you move a little closer, or remove the microphone and talk to her?
Hi, I'm Kaylee Garrett. I am currently a high school, like, athlete, not a good one, but I try. I play soccer and across-town competition for both football, soccer, softball, that's a huge part of it. I did marching band and playing music for the football team. The games that were across-town, everyone was there. There was a whole bunch of people. That was a serious game between Thunder and Streaks. The amount of competition that goes between students, but it's also friendliness between everyone. Sorry, I can't speak. Combining the teams would have the lack of competition and between students, but it also might cause, like, oh, I'm from this school, you're from this school, and it might cause inner turbulence between the students. There's that. I didn't know what else to say, so.
Thank you for coming. Nice job. Anybody else wish to address the board? Okay. Move on to staff comments. Are there any staff comments? Any board comments? For those right here, we're returning to the issue of the, of the combination of sports a little bit, so if you want to stay around, you're welcome to stay. It might be a few minutes before we get there, but we will get there tonight to at least hear some more on this topic. Okay, since there's no other comments, we will go on to the superintendent.
First, we want to welcome our scouts in the audience back there. It's great to have students here, those that spoke. We got Mr. Waldendorf, great teacher at Woodstock High School, looks like he's part of the troop there. Mr. Misselli shared with me that they're the old troop for his, his sons, so.
Three twenty-nine, two ones.
Welcome all, thanks for coming and being part of our meeting this evening. Great weather outside today, certainly felt like spring today, which was amazing. Spring sports are in full swing, and we're back from spring break and looking forward to our final push for the last six weeks of the school year, the end of a successful year, and then start looking forward for us towards next year and then, you know, another great start. We're in the heart of our testing season this spring, which isn't great for kids. Obviously, you know, it's a lot of the, the stuff that we work towards that they don't always enjoy, but we don't soon. Middle, we're in the midst of giving our IR, IR test, third to eighth graders. Tomorrow, we have the SAT for juniors and SAT prep test for freshmen and sophomores. So getting out of the way is a great time for us, the last portion of the school year's coming, and we'll have a successful end of the school year and start looking for a great summer. That's my report.
Thank you. All right, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to our new business. The first item of new business is the approval of the Vanguard Energy Master Services Energy Agreement.
Okay, we have a couple items to pop up here. The first one is the master services agreement. The service agreement is provided consulting services on district natural gas and electric utilities. Historically, the past 20 years, actually, the district has utilized utility helping with Mrs. Patty Ogden helping us with that. She has been transitioning to a retirement phase, so we, we've been hiring ourselves to look for an ultimate consultant. So to address the service, we consult with Vanguard Energy Services. They've been in the energy supply and wellness business for over 20 years, and they, the boss that they've been charged us to provide consulting services can include what we charge us per in-visit. For example, our natural gas, we charge 20.005 cents per term. If the board is in favor of this agreement, there is a suggested motion that we hear.
You know, right now, it's such a volatile time with, with all of our energies that reaching out to someone like Vanguard, we think it's gonna give us a, a good peace of mind, that, again, not good news coming anytime soon buying it, but that we're getting a full look at everything, you know. In retrospect, we've been signing one-year contracts, two-year contracts, you know, a three-year contract a couple of years ago was, it was a ton of money. And, and, you know, you never know how the market's gonna be, but I think working with someone that does this full-time, you know, Patty Ogden's an amazing job for our district over the years, but she does a million different things for us, and some just will do. But, but this is an area where someone just focuses on energy, natural gas, electric for us here, we think is gonna be advantageous for us, and we talked to their references, their work with school districts is what they do, so we feel like it's a good move.
And then if we talk in more detail about the boss himself, that, yeah, I thought the home is a great point of all these trends that Vanguard will bring us some guidance.
What will, what will we, what will we be paying Vanguard? Because I, I, if I read that correctly, that will be determined later?
Yes, if you look at the second item, where you look at this district's natural gas service agreement, what we pay now will be included in what we pay per term for natural gas, electric, or electric.
It's a charge per term, big point, 0.05.
But I mean, I, can, do we have an idea of what that charge is per term?
Yes, yes.
Well, we know, we know what it is per term.
Well, I mean, what they're gonna charge us, their portion.
That we know, that's, that's already been determined, it's 0.005 per term.
Okay, that's.
That's predetermined, that, that's already determined, so that's.
All right.
And the nice thing about that too is obviously they're getting paid per term, so, you know, sometimes you always worry about if someone's taking a percentage. I mean, I don't want to do that, but you worry a little bit. This is predetermined pre-term, so obviously, you know, their business is to get us the best deal possible.
A little bit different on the way we analyze utility helping with this office. That was a flat fee that we negotiated every year, and then we would also pay for per cent, whatever savings you would get from the market. Like I've already mentioned, in this case, it's just a flat amount per term.
Right, I was surprised to see how much it had gone up, but I don't think that's anywhere near, nearly what commercial and residential went up. That was, I think in December, the commercial residential fees were up 138%.
Well, it's kind of crazy to mention that because I pulled up the CPI for utilities and, you know, in just in general, because of price index, in the past 12 months, energy alone has gone up 32%. I spent the 12 month back, you're right, it's significant for our, from our perspective, the total cost of the next item, it is significantly increased, but it's like the same for everybody else's.
Right. There's a little bit of hindsight here to, I can't go back in time and, and there's no sense doing that, but have we, you know, we're, we're having a great rate through some turbulent times, and we locked that in for two or three years, which would have been available a year or two ago. I mean, we, we'd had significant savings. That's one of the reasons we're going in. I think we have to start making sure we look long-term and having someone, having outlook on the market and really start advising us, okay, you know, when can you, you know, pull the trigger on a longer-term deal that's gonna save you? Again, nothing's for sure, you know, some of the stuff in, in, you know, Eastern Europe has dictated some of this, so you can't dictate that or understand it ahead of time, but someone that's always in that market, we think is, is gonna be, some of it working for us.
Right, I, I think that by us being locked in the last year, we've made significant savings. I mean, huge.
You did, you're absolutely right about that.
We did, we, we just wish it was two more years. And that, that's part of the point, having someone, a friend telling us, now, you know, that rate will look great for three years. We got it for one, which was good, but now we're gonna see a significant increase, you know, whereas that three-year contract, I mean, it wasn't. You know, whereas that three-year contract, I mean, it was saving us a significant amount of money. That's where we think having a company that just does this is going to give us some different information potentially. But yeah, our last contract was amazing. We looked at what happened over the winter.
I'm not clear on something. Is utility help closing?
No, no, she's pretty much basing out, um, this is, as she, okay, she's personalized, she's moved down higher. Uh, she has retained it, just, she retained this 100 and a couple of her clients that she was starting to retire. So she's not closing, but she's kind of paying now that she's going to retire.
So she's no longer available to provide services?
Well, she, she is, if we talk very good, she kind of, uh, held on to us as kind of a special favor. She's been mainly retaining a couple of customers, so she, um, she's trying to pare things down a little bit. She's, at certain moments, she's still going to do some oversight for our requests, but not the, uh, not the extent that she has.
Okay. I mean, I, I just, I wasn't really clear as to why we're, why, I mean, it's one person. Why would we, why would we need to change at this point? Because that's what we're one person.
Well-
And I, that's where I'm not clear on the description of what we're getting.
We're a one-year contract that we wish we were into. I mean, honestly, that's part of it is that, you, you know, she does a million different things, and she did really well. Patty has saved the district a, a huge amount of money over the last 20 years. But we're also at a point now in a volatile market where we think getting advice from someone that works in that market only. Uh, I mean, we can, we compared prices that we could have got through her, through them. This was a better deal. Uh, it looked like for what we could get, so, you know, and if people are buying at a bigger volume, which typically helps you. So that, that's why we're asking for the change. If you don't want to do it, you want us to go back to Patty, we can do that. We just, we don't know how long that'll last, how long she'll keep us up. But again, it's been a great, it's been a great relationship. We just think we need to move to someone that does this now, um, as their main purpose.
Does anybody else have any questions or any concerns? Anybody wish to address? If not, just a suggested motion on page thirty-six of your materials.
Move to approve the master service, uh, energy agreement with Vanguard Energy Services for three years, commencing July first, 2022 through June thirtieth, 2025.
Second.
Was that Dr. Mr. Misselli? You got a motion by Mr. Headley, seconded by Mr. Misselli. Roll call, please.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yeah.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, then the next item is approval of natural gas provider contract for 2022 through 2025.
Okay, this one is a little bit more of the information we were talking about a minute ago. Um, the natural gas price, so we have our current contract expires June thirtieth. The symmetry is point two six nine eight per term. Significantly less than, uh, what we are looking at these days. Like my other commodities, natural gas prices have nearly doubled in the last six months. This increases primarily through the current geopolitical environment, coupled with over the normal times in northern, in particular, United States for mid-April. In addition, per U.S. domestic inventory levels are 17% below the buyer average. And the U.S. continues to export liquid natural gas at near-record levels, helped by van in Europe. So although the price per term continues to add up, Mr. Cheewin with Vanguard Energy has recommended a trigger price, which means that we will look to sign up or lock in at a price of point five one six per term or less for an initial commitment, point five percent of our, um, usage. And that would really kind of allow us some movement as we head into the time of year when people are using less natural gas. So we start out with just the percentage of what we typically use, and then potentially move that up before we get to the winter season. And just to give you some perspective, um, in the past, we typically lock in 80% of the year, and then just about 20% kind of, you know, just slowing to see what the rates were out there. Um, based on his suggestion, he would like to see us start out with 25% sometime in the next month or so, watching what the prices are doing, but not to exceed 5516 per term. And then hopefully get to a lower rate as we get further into the summer months. But this, this motion, this suggested motion allows or gives us permission to lock in at a rate not to exceed 5516 per term. Questions? It's, it is pretty, it's pretty shocking when you look at, I, I do have a graph, I can see what's happening with natural gas prices. And, um, uh, Mr. Cheewin at, uh, Vanguard, if you're in the link, it's why people get it on a daily basis. And it's just, it's, I'm waiting for that to go down. I'm just watching, waiting. And if you look at like prior, as you're trying to kind of see where it hits some peaks in April and it starts coming down in May, so that's where we're holding out towards that maybe move time frame before we lock anything in. But this gives us the ability to, um, take advantage of that commodity price. And it is a commodity. It changes on a daily basis, so.
Do you know the current price per thermes?
I'm sorry, the current price per, oh, gas say 20.67. So like I said, we're hoping that that will come down as we get into the warmer weather. And that's what he suggested as well. He said it's no rush, and that's what he suggested, trigger price of 5516. So that's where we're hoping to lock in at that or less.
And historically, that's the trend to the latest period is it doesn't come down.
It does.
So it's- Spring and summer.
Right, and that's why, you know, you can see one of the reasons that the price has gone up is because, on average, buyer average, we, um, we've got cooler temperatures in the northern United States for mid-April, so when people are using more natural gas and you've got the, uh, the issues going on in Europe, and, 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 of course, we're selling it. But, um, hopefully as temperatures increase here, we see the low down in the prices and come over this fall.
Now, are we going to lock in this 20 or 25%? Is this a three-year lock-in on that 25%?
Yes, and that's why we started with just 25% because perhaps if we get some lower rates, we can follow, we'll take advantage of that.
Okay. The other thing we're going to do is we can store thermes in spade. We haven't, we've never done this before, but, and I don't understand this completely, but I don't understand any of it. We, we can, we can buy gas and store it in, uh, the, uh, exact term.
We can buy what we need at a lower rate and store that, so we'd be using it, we would be using essentially what we purchased at a lower rate. So essentially, even though we're not taking it as much in the summertime, we'd be buying at our, at our richer rate in larger quantities, so we can kind of store that and use that. So that's, that was one of the things, and evidently that's, um, something that NIDOR has gone up and down about, but evidently they've loosened up on that regulation a little bit this year, so we'll try and take advantage of that with Vanguard.
It's going to take a lot of little savings to make this more palatable, because the number is really high, but there's some things we can do to help bring it down. And that's not like 25% because we're hoping, you know, we want to lock in that, that rate when it becomes decent, but then we're holding back because if it drops lower, then we know, you know, we can lock in when it gets to the fours again.
You know, I, I was surprised. I knew this was coming because, you know, I've been watching my own, and I'm like, gee, this is up, you know, 100, 140%, you know, from a year before. And so that's why I said I couldn't believe that we could lock in like we did and save that much money.
It's crazy. And like I mentioned, I, I wish that we had just a lot of concern rate for the next five years. That would have been, you know, that's, we don't know. If you're in favor of this, there is a motion that, that I will be, um, some more here.
Are there any, is there any further discussion or any questions? Or is there no other?
I just want to compliment Julie, Julie on her work on this issue. She's really, uh, you know, as you can tell, I mean, she's looking at these numbers every day. She's really gotten to own the issue and understand it because it's a volatile issue right now financially. It's a big burden for us potentially, but she's really done a great job getting down to the details, understanding the nuances, uh, so she could bring you what, uh, what we think is a, is a good proposal. But also, you know, she's watching that price every day to make sure that we're going to get the best price we can lock in at. So I appreciate her hard work.
Any other questions or anything, anything else to talk about? If that, there's a suggested motion on page forty-three of your materials.
Move, move to authorize the CFO to approve a contract with Vanguard Energy at 5.16 or less per term for district natural gas issues, excuse me, for the period starting July 2022 through June of 2025.
Second.
Do we need anything in there limiting it to 25%? That is the one.
Well, we, we were in there because if for some reason, you know, Julie picks a day and it gets into the fours, um, we could go more than 25%. You know, and, and then coming back to your retirement percentage, I think we, we want to do a little more open-ended because it could get to a point where, you know, Vanguard is, is telling us, hey, there's a day in, you know, wherever, late May, where it's going to hit, you know, four three, four four, and you're going to grab 50%, 60% of that because you're not going to see a price again for six months.
All right. Well, your motion by Mr. Headley and seconded by Dr. Ferris. Roll call, please.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay. Next item of business is our consideration of bids.
Okay, hopefully one of these bids will be trading at a little lower price. So right now, we are looking at our paper purchases. Um, if you notice, we had bid specifications from paper of a couple of sites in the independent back in March. The bids were opened on April fourth, and we received three bids. One was a no bid, and so we can't bid it. The second pretty much doubled our prices from the prior year, because the same value we used last year. And then the third one was Midland, which had us using the same contract, which was the most economical. In looking at paper, uh, price increases, I have to admit, I was rather shocked, but they've increased 45% to 65%. The main reasons are, one was COVID. During the COVID, and now my paper usage dropped substantially due to the shift from paper usage to the manufacture of corrugated boxes to address all the shipping. So well, center of the day, I didn't ship, and suddenly people weren't making copies, they weren't in the office. Um, the second thing is when the economy started back, our manufacturing plants weren't often ready to switch over from boxes to paper. And then they, they were overwhelmed, couldn't keep up with the demand. And then the bank matters worse. Um, there are short dis of raw materials. Raw materials are in short supply, labor's in short supply, and then freight bots have isolated, do fuel and everything, it's a problem otherwise. Um, so although the district told demands, I thought from prior summer last year, which is really COVID-related, is not nearly at the levels that we had in the past. Um, we've been talking that we're going to, the best option for us is to go with the limit as the, uh, the lower costs as well as the more responsible costs for us. We will not be able to obtain as easily some of the specialty papers that we obtained in the past. But we've communicated to the demonstration that, you know, perhaps we'll utilize supplies that we may have on hand, which is going to have to be a little bit more thoughtful, conscientious about paper usage because the supply is not what it has been in the past. So, um, if you're in agreement with this investment, Ferris suggested motion is locked in. You have any questions, please, on?
All right. Does anybody have any questions regarding the paper bid? Or comments? Now, there's a suggested motion on page forty-six of your materials.
Move to award the 2022, 2023 paper bid to Midland Paper for a total estimated price of $47,294.94.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Humble, seconded by Mr. Headley. Roll call, please.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay. This is for all the new business required to vote. We'll move on to our discussion of the community engagement video and survey results for the high school athletic vote roll.
All right, so, you know, we talked about and put the survey out, um, had it open before spring break, uh, during that week back to give people, uh, an amount of time to, to watch the video hopefully and then take the survey. Uh, in the end, you know, what people opened and not take it, but actual surveys taken, we have just shy of 3,000. 2,000, I heard, eight nine. So, uh, that, that's a great number. That, you know, that's, um, you know, you put it in terms of a municipal election, it had about 1,700 voters. I think typically it's almost double that or close to it. Um, our, our, our debt survey had about 24, 2,500, so this is, you know, parent surveys had about 1,800. This is a huge number, uh, for us, which is high participation, which I appreciate the community input. Um, our parents were the largest, um, you know, the board wanted student input, and we got it. And had a nice number from our high school and middle school students. Some community input and then our, our staff also. So, um, you know, in the end, and then, uh, we also had that, then the confidence level, uh, corresponding, we, yes, no, and overall. It, you know, the, the overall vote was 61% uh, no against combining, and then 39% in favor of it. If you take the student vote out, uh, because students were adamantly against it, it's still 50, 56% uh, no. So, uh, either way you look at it, it was a, it's a predominantly, um, no vote on, um, on the question of combining or not. If you look at the confidence level, um, you know, the, the, it looks like probably by a slight uptick. People, the no votes are a little bit higher than the, although statistically, probably there would be about a wash when you look at, uh, range, uh, in both high, I mean, both in the, um, you know, ranging from the mid-sevens to the upper eights. So I think, you know, um, you know, I said, we, we said it was a referendum when we put it out. Although, uh, I think 3,000 votes is a lot to have input on, which I appreciate. And I think, to me, that was an important part of the discussion. You know, like when that board asked us to bring this up, you know, I said from the very beginning, I think it's something we have to talk about. I think we brought our, our, our concerns are real and, um, you know, there, there are things that I think we need to talk about, people need to be aware of. But after making people aware of them and being pretty honest that they can open with them, you know, the, the majority of people here still don't favor bringing them together. And, uh, you know, from our point of view, you know, we're passionate people and I, I get a lot of that. Um, you know, if I passionate people on the other side before, but, you know, to put it out to the community and get that kind of response. To me, I wouldn't want to impose this on somebody. Uh, I think it's got to be something we do with the community, and that, that kind of, uh, response to me would give us pause moving forward. But, I mean, we, we serve the pleasure of the board. Whatever the board wants us to do, we could do and would do.
Any comments or any discussion regarding the outcome of the survey?
You know, I understand that, uh, the community assumes we're on one direction, which is that, I'm glad we got that information too, so I appreciate that. But if we stay in the same realm that we're in, we can't just continue to do the same thing and expect different result or different results. And I, I'm concerned about the future, as we've heard here too as well. So I don't, I'm not saying I would oppose, you know, what you're saying, but I also think we should expect more. And I, I think that's, needs to be addressed, and I don't think we can just say, okay, we're, we're going to go the way we've been going now for and expect the different, because it's not going to be that. I, I'm really concerned about this issue. When I look at like, girl soccer, you've got 32 kids in both high schools combined to play soccer or softball.
Football.
That's sad, excuse me. And I, and I want to see that change. And I put my heart and soul in this district for 33 years, and I'm on the board, and I, I love this place. But to see the way it's going isn't, isn't healthy. So, um, I don't want to see this, you know, just, you know, we're going to keep two teams in two different schools and then expect it to change. So I would like to see the ADs put their cap, their thinking caps on and principals and everybody else and say, let's, let's make this a better program.
Yeah, I think the one thing maybe we didn't touch on enough in reflection, the trends we seeing are national trends too. I, I, we're, we're not an aberration. I mean, you know, obviously, football was, was what kind of triggered this because North, North got, I mean, we, we've almost four or five games the last couple of years, and hopefully it gets better, and maybe it will, maybe it won't, but that's a national trend, right? Football numbers are down, and participation in numbers, you know, I talked to Ken Martin today. He's, uh, assistant tennis coach typically at North, but it's out to Kentucky over, you know, there's Fox Valley teams without a JV team in tennis, right? I mean, and so you're talking about big conferences. So there are problems with numbers across the board everywhere, so I'm not saying we shouldn't work on it. And I get where, you know, Jerry said before, beating the bushes, we're trying that, but we're fighting some issues that, that exist nationally, regionally with it. But again, whatever the board wants to see, we'll definitely work on.
Well, so what do you say? Because I'm looking at it, we're looking at COVID numbers. When we looked at pre-COVID numbers, we were fine. During COVID, my opinion is, we're still okay. There's big numbers in basketball. There's big numbers in volleyball. I mean, and then we're looking at the survey. We don't listen to our community or don't put out surveys.
I don't disagree with that, Jerry.
And, and we do have to put on our thinking caps. We're going to hire a new athletic director. One of the first things on that interview question is, how are you going to get athletes out and retain them? And with coaches, that should be the first question, and they should be, and we should do a national search. And we need to, uh, you know, work with the youth programs and everything. We have to get together as head coaches, athletic directors, and we got to figure out how to retain. directors, and we got to figure out how to retain coaches, good coaches, get rid of the bad ones, and how to get kids out for interscholastic activities. So it's a, it's a district problem, but we need to face it. But I don't think, you know, our community, sixty-one percent does not want to combine. We got to listen to them. And it might go down the low road and we visit this again. I don't know. But I know one thing, you give this up, you don't get it back. We get big, we're still going to be one school. And, um, you know, and there's some great points from both sides. And I listened. I, I, I wrote down a lot of objective things here with numbers. So I don't know what we're saying tonight. Do we, are we, whether we, are we voting on this or we're going to move on?
We're not doing that because of the fact.
No, no, I'm not saying tonight. Are we saying we're going to vote or we're just going to, you know, sixty-one percent of our community says, no, they don't want to combine.
There are a couple of ways we could go. We could have a vote. Uh, we could have a, we could leave it open for, for members to suggest a vote. And if nobody suggests a vote, the issue dies for lack of emotion. Uh, we, somebody could suggest a motion. I don't know. Does anybody have any interest in, does anybody want any further information on this issue at this point? Or does everybody feel like they've got it up?
Uh, I'd like to say, um, first, I think even pre-COVID, I coached at North for five years or six years. I thought I was a pretty good coach. I put my heart and soul into it. Sometimes I had four girls on my team. So, and I'm like, why can't we get these kids out? This is in two thousand when the school first opened. And it was difficult and it's been difficult for that, that program all along. And there's other programs that have that difficulty. So I think we need to address that. What are we going to do with these programs that don't have enough kids, like this girls softball team? Are we going to combine those? Are we going to have clubs? No, I mean, are we going to have, you know, um, a dis, or a district team like we do with golf or?
We have swimming nets combined. They do great.
Exactly. But I, I don't know if the context that we're in, are we going to accept?
I mean, just so we're clear, in swimming, we swim in the Fox Valley. As a, I don't think it's official, but we take part, they use the pool a lot, whatever. Um, you know, in golf, we, we golf in the KRC. They don't like that we golf as fun school. And I get it, right? I mean, we don't want to lose a golf match. We're golfing at eighteen hundred against schools of five percent. It's understandable, right? So to move that into another sport, they're not going to want that. And, and I, again, to be a good conference member, I don't know that we should push that either, you know. Uh, what we can do, the board can do whatever they want. The board doesn't have to take any action either. This isn't something that came up for discussion. If you take no action, we, we revert back to, you know, what, what we've been doing. Again, while looking the whole, and again, and just so we're clear, our coaches try to get kids out. Our coaches do a great job. Both buildings support athletic programs. You know, they're events you go to with huge numbers. Um, you know, there's, there's sports where we struggle too. But, um, I, I don't think it's a lack effort of a coach anywhere. I, I, just so we're all clear on that, you know, can we do more? Can we, can we think a different way? Sure. But this isn't like coaches aren't doing anything. Coaches are trying hard, uh, with what we have.
So again, does anybody think that they need any more information or any more time to make this decision? If so, let's speak up and we'll, we'll get it. And we'll see if we can put the issue to, to rest one way or the other.
I was originally in great favor of combining the, the programs. I personally, I still am, but I said I'd listen to what the community said. That's why I was elected. So that's how I'm going to vote or how, how I feel if I'm not, we're not going to go further with that. So, but I just wanted to get to know what my feelings were.
Does anybody want any more information?
No.
My, my only comment or question would be, did we do a good enough job educating the people taking the survey? Did we have enough information out there? Do we explore a committee to look at recommendations, to look at other ideas, to get more input and continue the process? Because I'd really hate to have to bring this up again next year or a year and a half or whatever.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should keep bringing it out constantly. I, I, I mean, I, we put out a video that I thought was pretty good, that the only feedback I got on it was it's propaganda in favor of it and it's still lost. So I, I mean, I don't know. I, I didn't hear anyone say that we undersold the, the issue in the video. Um, and if, I, I, I think we presented it fairly. I think we went as in-depth as you can in the video. I think people paid attention to the meetings. And people made great points, valid points created and brought up, uh, for sure. And people, you know, I've said the whole time, there's, there's arguments on both sides. I think people, about both of them. I don't know what more we could do to educate people on the issue.
So here's my suggestion. Um, for the next meeting, we'll put it back on the agenda for further discussion or vote with no motion. Just, if anybody wants to bring a motion, they can bring a motion. They don't want to bring a motion, they don't, and it dies for lack of emotion. And if there's a motion, we'll vote on the motion and we'll make a decision. And then we'll close the discussion, whatever the decision. Now, if we continue, should say that, should we close it? The vote is not to further look into, um, combining the school. And if people have issues with bringing it up at that point or want to discuss whether or not it was adequately presented, we can discuss that at that time as well and decide whether or not to take close. Okay? Are we okay with that?
Done, sir.
So just to clarify, what do you want? You want just a, an action, an open action item?
Action.
Okay.
Okay, that, uh, closes that discussion then, uh, for, for tonight. Um, if any, that finishes all of your business. So do we have any committee reports, any committees met? Or do any committees have any report since our last meeting?
Is everything going on with the Pride? I mean?
You, you approved it tonight?
I mean, it was a, inside of.
You already approved it tonight, Jerry?
No, it was a side note, which one's we're going to do?
The Pride Committee already completed it.
All right. Uh, since there are no further committee reports, uh, we'll leave a motion going to close session. The motion is listed on page two of your materials. Please recite the motion exactly as it's stated and all material. The motion going to close session.
Move to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing, and I want to say, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint law against an employer or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
Motion by Mr. Free. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ferris, thank you. Motion by Mr. Curici, seconded by Dr. Ferris. Roll call, please.
Mr. Curici?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Hummer?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go into closed session. Thank you all for coming. And thanks for scouts for coming. I hope it was, uh, more written to you.